Let's call this meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Here.
Councilmember David Fowler.
Here.
Doug Shosow.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lisa Northrup.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Present.
Okay, first item on the agenda is the minutes for our November 19th City Council regular meeting. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. A draft copy of those minutes were provided in your meeting packets and they're presented for your approval by resolution.
Has everybody had a chance to review them? Are there any comments or changes? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the minutes from the regular city council meeting as presented.
Second. Have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is the city acting as the liquor licensing authority. There'll be a presentation on a possible action for formal acceptance of an application for a hotel restaurant liquor license for Peppers LLC at 410 East Railroad Avenue and to schedule a public hearing for the, on the application for January 7th. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the first step in the process of awarding or considering a new liquor license application. This was presented first to the city in October, reviewed by my office, the police department, and the city attorney's office, and found to be complete. What we're asking you to do is to formally accept the application at this time, and that would start the 30-day waiting period before a public hearing can be held. During that time, the applicant would gather signatures of support for the license, and at the hearing, they would present evidence and, such as those signatures, in favor of their receiving the app or the license, and anyone else can come and speak either in support or against the license. So, we're not really approving anything, we're just formally accepting the application and starting that 30-day clock, and then we'll have the public hearing in January.
Okay. I believe everybody's had a copy of it and opportunity to review it. So, I would entertain a resolution to accept the application and move forward to a public hearing.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution accepting, formal acceptance of an application for a new hotel and restaurant liquor license for Peppers LLC doing business as Peppers at 410 East Railroad Avenue and request scheduling of a public hearing for January 7th.
Second. Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is a presentation on adjusting water rates.
Mr. Nation?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
To be determined.
Yeah. So, it's that time of the year that we take a look at any type of adjustments we need to our utility rates. Last year, we brought in a new consultant, Raftellus. We had Andrew and his group come in and make a presentation to council and talked about the, where we were with our water rates and our sewer rates. They, they handle both of the, the funds for us when we look at rate design. And we, last year, accepted those recommendations that were in his report. We increased water rates, you know, as of January 1, 2019, but we left sewer rates alone after his report. We've, what I've done is I've, I didn't ask Andrew to come back. We haven't had him change anything in his report. I did include in your packet the executive summary from his report that he did last year, just so you'd have it, and if you had any questions, we can go through it. But, we're just following along with the recommendation that he made last year at this time to go ahead and, and make another jump in the water rates. It is an 8% increase that you have in front of you in the resolution. That's not a number that I bring to you lightly. It's not a number I like to put into place, but it's the type of number that we need to have in order to get our rates to where we're positioned for NISP and the, the type of bond payments that we'll be looking at with that project. And so, those type of increases are being put in place to get us to where we need to be when the project moves forward. I see a hand going up right now.
Yeah, I already got a question for you.
Yep.
In that executive summary and everything like that, he, you know, where it said one reason that they're adjusting it up or suggesting the 8%, as it says, exceed end your cash reserve targets of 25% of, I guess, O and M's probably operation and maintenance.
Yes.
Expenses plus $1 million plus next year's debt service. Why do we have to have that much extra reserve?
I think for a couple of reasons. As we're planning to move forward, and Brent, you probably can fill in on this as well, is that we've got to have so much, part of our goal is to have enough cash reserves that we don't have to take out a loan for the bond requirement for cash reserves when it comes time to bond. So, the, the reserve is building up so that we don't have to borrow a cash reserve, because all bonds have a covenant, a reserve covenant, that you have to maintain at least one year's worth of payments, and it has to be in reserve, and it has to be restricted, so it can't be spent. And what some communities do is they'll go out and they'll bond not only for what they need to pay for the project, but they'll also bond and have that in reserve, and we're trying to save taxpayers money in the long run by having enough in reserves that we don't have to borrow the bond requirement reserve in the future. So, that's one of the reasons why.
The other.
Rate payers.
Yeah. The other reason why, and it didn't show up in his report, because he didn't know we were going to do this, but we came to you and, and requested that we pay for the eastern pump station in cash. And so, we've hit the reserve already harder than his report shows. We're still okay. I don't have any reason to believe that we've, you know, messed with his findings, but we did come in and are, we've already allocated a portion of that reserve fund to go to building the, the pump station outside of Platteville. And so, and that's part of the reason that we will go back in, in 2019 and have Raftellus come back to us and do a update of this report before we do anything in 2020. We'll make sure that we have it all examined again. We traditionally try to do the rate studies every two years in the funds. Sometimes we do them yearly, depending on what has happened, but we, every other year has kind of been our practice to make sure we stay on top of these things. I know some of these communities that we've talked to in the, even in the NISP group, they do rate studies once every five years, and to me, that's a little bit scary with the way things change, a pump station here and there and things, you know.
Here and there.
Yeah, it just, yeah, things can get spent quickly, so.
Mayor, what's the cost going to be to each and every one of us increased? Do we know that?
So, he had a chart on, what was that, page five? Yeah. So, you're looking at your average water bill for a resident in the city of Fort Morgan would go from $84 a month up to $90.75 a month, is what he was projecting the change would be.
So, about, looks like it's about $6.94 a month.
Yeah.
Well, this was a hot topic at my phone all week, so.
Yeah.
There's a lot of cranky people about that, so.
My thing about this and everything, you know, when we were talking about the wastewater fund, and I was talking about people on a fixed income.
Yes.
And we said, you know, $5 can be a big hit. Well, now you're saying, well, another $5 or $10, you know, with a hit with that, with this taking it up and everything. So, that's, you know, really where my concern lies. I mean, people who are working, I mean, still hard with that, but like I said, when all of a sudden your utilities go up and you have to take it out of something else that you're budgeting for, I think makes it awful tough.
It does. And the only, the only news that I can pass along is that we are in the middle of both the electric and the rate study, and the gas studies. And I do know that we will be looking at another rate reduction in the electric, and they just didn't have the findings in place to bring at the same meeting. I'm hoping to be able to bring that to one of the first meetings in January. And our preliminary look at our gas rates would also indicate that we would be seeing a decrease in those rates also.
Good. If you make it $10, you'll see a smile right here.
Making my phone happy. Yeah, I know, I know.
I understand you.
Yeah.
Well, and I think one of, what Councilmember Lindell brings up is a really good point, and we, we are very conscientious of those who are on fixed incomes. One of the things that this doesn't necessarily represent is that the average bill is spread over a lot of different users. Actual bills, what you, you look at is a percentage of the, the base rate, and so, 8% of the base rate, which is around 37...
Yeah.
Something right now is really the number that you, you look at is, on a fixed income from a perspective that you're probably not going to use the same amount of water at your house that most people do at other places that have, you know, six kids that like to shower three times a day. And I don't know who would have a house like that, but I hear they exist. And so, you know, I think the average sometimes can be misleading as well as compared to someone's specific bill, and to keep that in mind. But, yeah, we do, as Brent pointed out, we, we really take a lot of time and consider these raises and what they mean, and are they necessary, and are we trying to look at other places, ways to offset those costs?
Yeah, I just glanced down, and the, the increase to your base rate for a residential customer would be about $3.40 a month. So, that $10 is an average of what people use on their lawns and everything else.
And then the commodity charge is what, 30 cents?
Yeah.
Something to that effect, I think is what I remember reading.
Yep.
Yes, it is 30 cents.
Yep. Any other questions? And we've got a couple of agenda items coming up that we will talk about, some of the increased expenses in the water fund and why some of the increases necessary.
Well, this is all tied to the NISP project, which we've been in since early 2000.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we've planned, been planning for this for many years, and it should have been over in 2014, but we're prolonging the pain through our bureaucratic system. Is there any other questions for Mr. Nation?
No, sir.
Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution approving the adjustment to the water rates.
Second.
Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
I wouldn't say thank you, Brent, but you're still there.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Next is a presentation on adjusting sewer rates.
Yeah. This one's a little easier to swallow, I guess. This is just a 2% increase. When they looked at our rates, we've been dipping into reserves, or at least budgetarily, we've been dipping into reserves and make the, in order to make the budget balance in the sewer fund. And so, we've known for a couple of years that we were probably going to have to impose at least some kind of cost of living, you know, type of adjustments to the budget. And so, Raftellus had suggested that we implement one of those, and this year, we're starting in 2020. And so, that's what you have in, in front of you is a, a 2% increase in the sewer rates. I was just looking at the, on a residential tap to your base charge, that is an increase of 42 cents a month. So, and then depending on what your commodity charge is, it then increases depending on your usage, so.
Now, is it your total consumption that's based on your commodity charge for wastewater?
It's your total consumption during the summer months. We exclude your winter months when we.
Or do you use your winter months?
Yeah, we use your winter months to do your summer consumption. Right, sorry, I said it backwards. Not when you're watering your lawn.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
And that's what your annual?
Yes, number.
Consumption rate for, for charges on it? So, I believe that plant's 23 years old.
Yeah. And I've already been in conversations with Raftellus. We have them on a three-year contract, and so, I've already had conversations with them about beginning new studies sometime spring of next year, so.
This also includes our plant investment fee adjustments?
Uh, we didn't make any, we made those adjustments last year.
Last year.
And so, yeah, where there's no, this is just strictly to the, the rates, user rates, not investment fees.
Any questions on the sewer rates for Mr. Nation?
And this, we might have known this in the, last year, but as far as communicating this to the public outside of the paper, does it come in like their next, their next bill, or how do we communicate the increase?
Typically, it just goes into effect in, in their next bill. We've not, I mean, it'll, obviously, the paper catches it, and that's where it gets pushed around, but we've not done any public outreach on. The only time that we have to do outreach is if it involves a change to like a tariff or something, where we have to publicly notice everybody that we're making some type of change. But with our water and sewer in particular, we don't have those type of requirements, and so, we just usually make them and they go into effect.
What we can do, though, is we can include that on some of our social media posts and let people know to watch their bill and understand that there, there will be some modifications. And I'm, you know, I'm certain there'll be some comments about it.
Yeah.
But I feel like the importance of our community being independent with water into the future, it's such a critical issue, and unless you're on the inside.
Yeah.
You don't see how important it is. So, I think that could be, I don't know how far we are along on the marketing and, or the media specialist, but that could be a good, um, project for them. So.
True.
Thanks. That's, that's all I had, Mayor.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the increase to the water, wastewater rates. Second.
Have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
I got one more question for you, Brent, real quick. PIF, is that a tap fee?
Yeah, plant investment fee.
Plant investment fee is what it stands for. You were talking, brought that up. Okay.
Yeah. It's, it's, in a real nutshell, it's the fee that somebody, if you want a new tap in the system, if you come to me today and say, I want a new water tap or sewer tap, you are being, in most cases, connected into a system that everybody else has already paid for. We've paid to have a treatment plant built. We've paid to have a large amount of infrastructure already put in the ground. And so, you're paying for the investment to get into that system and become an equal in, whether it's water or sewer.
Right.
And so, that's why those fees should continue to rise, and it helps recoup some of the costs that have already been occurred in the system, so.
When we're talking about stuff, when new developments coming in and economic incentives and everything, is that what you're referring to when you call it a tap fee then, or is there a different tap fee on top of it?
To me, the, when you talk about sewer, that is the tap fee, because that's the only fee that we charge for connecting to the city sewer, sanitary sewer. But in the water, there's actually three components that we charge for. We charge a plant investment fee, we charge a water fee, which is tied to a unit of CBT water or the rate that we have. And then we also set a meter and a connection point into the distribution system, and you're required to pay that charge. And so, because we don't have meters on the sewer side. And so, your water tap fee actually has three components to it. So, and people use different terminology, and some towns don't use PIFs. They have a completely different term for it, and some people just refer to them all as a tap fee. And so, it does get confusing. I understand. So, yeah, I try to spell that out for people, but yeah, there's different components to ours.
Right. Okay, super. Thank you. Next is presentation extending our water lease with Riverside Irrigation Company.
Okay. So, here we go. One of, one of the reasons we need more money in the, in the water fund. So, right now, in my memo, I outline the fact that we are leasing a total of 2,837 units of CBT from the Riverside system. Riverside Irrigation is kind of the furthest eastern ditch system, along with Bijou, that still has an allotment of CBT water. When they first developed the CBT project, it was all given to farmers. It wasn't given to municipalities. And every ditch company was allowed to buy blocks of it and buy into the project. And so, Riverside and Bijou are kind of the two furthest eastern points. Both organizations have blocks of CBT water. The city, actually, their first major block purchase was from Riverside, where we outright purchased from them a block, large block. But they retain these 2,837 units over the years. When we were dealing with bringing Cargill onto our system or not, we realized that we were going to have a shortage with the amount of ownership that we had. And so, we went to Riverside, the city at that time entered into a lease agreement back in 1999, I think is what I have in my memo, and, which allows us to cover the shortfall that we have with the water that we don't own. And so, that agreement has five-year extenders on it, and so, we extended it five years ago, which was one of the, one of the things I worked on when I first started here. And now, it was time to extend it again. And in our negotiations, the one thing that we requested as the city was that we wanted to extend it for 10 years. If everything goes as planned within this project this time around, we would hopefully be taking delivery of NISP water in 10 years, and then we wouldn't need this, this lease anymore. And so, Riverside was willing to do that, but they wanted a big increase. So, the agreement you have in front of you is basically the culmination of those negotiations. It's within the parameters that you guys set in executive session, so nothing new. The only thing I did notice when I printed out my copy to bring it in, see those two pink marks on there? There's two typos in the agreement, and I called, it was changes their attorney, or the Quality Water attorney had made, and they're indeed just typos. And so, before Ron signs anything, as long as you guys okay this, we would need to get those typos corrected. The obvious question is, is why did we have Quality Water's attorneys looking at an agreement with Riverside Irrigation? And so, for some reason, there are 20 of these units that Quality Water has the first right of refusal to purchase at any point in the future. And so, when we entered into the agreement for all 2,837, we had to make Quality Water a third party to the agreement. And so, they continue to let us lease them from Riverside until such a day as they want to purchase them. And I think for right now, they're perfectly fine with us leasing these for the next 10 years. They've got pretty substantial water supply, so they're, they're not looking to buy these. And so, so we've got to make them a party to this agreement. So, if you look at the signature block, it's us, Riverside, and Quality Water. And this has been by everybody's attorneys now, and including ours. And I was the one that caught the typo, but that was because I look at the numbers. So, so I'm looking for.
Good job.
Yeah.
It wasn't our typo.
Yeah, yeah. No, it wasn't, it wasn't just typo. I will, his or Nina's, it was, it was the attorney from Quality Water that messed it up. But, but anyhow, so tonight, I'm looking for approval of the, this amendment to the original agreement, as long as we get those typos corrected in the, the final version for signature.
Jeff, do we have to add that, the typo language to our resolution? Pending typo fixes?
You could, I suggest the resolution refer to the amendments indicated on the discussed version.
Okay.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute the addendum to the amended lease with Riverside Irrigation District and Morton County Water Quality District with indicated, or indicated on the discussed version.
Second. Have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Brent's still here.
Part of Mr. Nation's show.
I thought about packing a lunch and bringing it.
Next is a presentation authorizing the mayor to execute the 16th interim agreement for participation in the Northern Integrated Supply Project.
16.
16. Yeah, I don't know where to begin. So, yes, this officially begins our 16th year of operating under agreement. I think we were operating as a group for a year before they actually formalized the agreement and everything, so. But this is just our paperwork between us and Northern Water for the year. We've done, we do these every December, January, thereabouts. And it's basically just our operating agreement with their organization to go ahead and continue to do the work that they're doing. A little bit different this time around, and we've kind of talked about this interim financing that is the next agenda item. This one, how we're referring to things, these are the hard, these are kind of the, these are the engineering costs. These are some of the negotiation things that are still going on. These are the costs that are going to have more design finish up on the road and the dams and things like that. And so, so the 16th interim agreement has a total budget for the group of $10 million. So, all 15 of us are paying that, and so, our portion of that is $900,000. If you go to the last page of the agreement, it breaks down where all the funds are going, you know, on environmental assistance and the design activities on Glade, which is the dam, and some of the road stuff, some of the water quality issues that we're still trying to resolve, and then some of the land title work that we're doing on some of the purchases. And so, that's just our normal expenditures. Those things have escalated. We're now getting closer to construction, and so, those costs go up. But that's, that's the agreement you have in front of you. There's nothing different in that agreement that we've ever renewed. It's just the dollar amount is all they basically adjust, and then, and then what they do during the year is what they change in there. So, be happy to answer any questions on that.
Any questions?
Carry on, right?
And we're hoping, just, just to let you know, on NISP itself is, we're hoping past the first of the year that a lot of the, the federal permitting stuff is going to fall into place. And, and they had a notice, I think I told you, they had a notification issue they had to resolve. And so, a lot of this is going to get resolved probably before April. And so, we're hoping by then, we'll have a permit, or at least been notified that the permit's been moved forward, and then they can have their discussions about who wants to sue the project. And, and then that's a whole nother discussion. But we think we get to that major milestone by April. That's what, everything is leaning towards, reaching that major, major milestone of having a record of decision, so.
Done with the EIS and the.
Yeah.
Corps of Engineers and.
Yep. Yeah, right now, we're doing a lot of negotiations with Laramo County to get pipelines and. Yeah, right now, we're doing a lot of negotiations with Laramo County to get pipelines and the reservoir site, all the permitting issues taken care of, and then the clean water issues with the state of Colorado.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the 16th interim agreement with Northern Conservancy District. Can I shorten and say the NISP project?
Second.
Does that work?
That's really long one.
Have a resolution by Allison Howe, and a second by Lisa Northrup, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Okay, one more. Presentation authorizing the mayor to execute the finance agreement for Northern Integrated Supply Project.
Okay, and this one, I'll apologize, we actually gave you a new draft of the agreement in your table file, and, is that right? Was it in there?
Yep.
So, what had happened was, we've, we've been going through this draft for several months as a participant group, and our attorneys have been going through this, I don't know when that meeting, that first meeting that Jeff was that he went to, but it was earlier this year to get this agreement in place by the end of the year. I was told at the last participant meeting that I went to that it was good to go, and let's move it forward, and so, I had it put on the agenda, and then I was notified two days ago that they made a change to it, and so, I was all like, oh geez, whoops. And so, talked to, talked to Northern, I said, well, what did we change? Is it, you know, substantial? And one of the groups, there's a clause in there that they are basically wanting some of this stuff left in place until any type of environmental lawsuit is taken care of. They don't want anybody to be able to sell off any of their NISP ownership until the lawsuit with the environment groups is resolved, and.
And that just keeps everybody a party.
It just keeps everybody together until we get through any potential litigation, is all that it does. And it, to us, I mean, I talked to her with Jeff, I said, it doesn't really affect us, we're not looking at selling or anything at this point, and so, it doesn't, so if that's what they wanted to put in there, that's what they did. This change will go to a formal approval by the Northern Board two nights from now. And so, once it becomes formalized with their board, we will then have a formal agreement for the mayor to sign, and so, but what you see in front of you, I do not anticipate any type of changes to it. So, we're looking for approval for this agreement as long as there's nothing substantial to it. If they come back with a substantial change, we would bring it completely back to council and, and let you see it again, and then talk through it again. But at this point, we're looking for approval to have the mayor sign this agreement. Now, financially, the obligation on this one is $1.8 million for the city, but this, this money is spread out over not a 12-month expenditure window, but it's a 24-month expenditure window, is how they're looking at it, because this money is being set aside, and why there's a separate agreement specifically for land purchases that the group needs to make. These go to the hard assets that the group will take ownership of. We still need to buy a fair amount of land underneath Glade, and we still need to buy all the land under Galeton Reservoir. And then, there's some land purchases that have to be made because of the relocation of Highway 287. And so, they wanted to keep the funds separate, that if you're paying the engineer, you're paying the engineer, but if you're buying a piece of ground that the group is going to take ownership of, this is the agreement they wanted all the participants to have. It has a lot of details in it about what happens if you decide to leave, you know, and those type of things. So, it's a completely different type of agreement than the 16th interim that we just went over. But it's set up for everybody's protection, puts everybody on equal footing, everybody's had a chance to go through it, including the attorneys, to make sure that it's what we want. And so, so there's a financial obligation with it, but it's spread out over a couple of years is what it ends up being, so.
So, nothing's really changed in there other than holding parties in case of.
Till litigations.
Sell lawsuits or.
Yep, yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Nation? I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the finance agreement for the Northern Integrated Supply Project.
Second.
Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, and a second by Allison Howe, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thanks, Brent.
Thank you very much, and I promise that I'll try to bring good news next time on it. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a presentation of delegating authority to the city treasurer to initiate the refinancing of bonds or other city debt under certain parameters set by council. Mr. Wells, Mr. Kenny.
I'll have Jeannie come up, this is just, we talked about this at the last meeting, and we're just trying to make sure we understand the parameters that work for city council, and so, I think section two will probably be the focus of the discussion, but Jeannie, if you want to kind of present it.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is a resolution that we talked about last time, as Jeff just said, so that I would have the authority to renegotiate the debt that we have in order to obtain a better interest rate, more favorable terms. Primarily, what Jeff is talking about is the section that we wrote in last time, you just had, well, I don't think you even actually had anything last time, but the principal amount can't exceed $10,645,000, so I can't go and take out debt for more than what the debt is, you know, that would be kind of a sneaky thing to do. The bonds and the loans are not supposed to mature any later than December 1st, 2029, because that is the deal we have now. We want to stick with the same term so that we're not having payments longer than, than what we do. And then, the net present value of the savings from the bonds issued should not be less than $250,000. And that amount, we had talked about, you guys might want us to change that, and we could do this resolution and change that amount if you wanted us to. $250,000 is a lot to save, but it is over 10 years, so it's like $25,000 a year, it isn't, it's actually more at the beginning and less at the end because of the way interest works, but it's a, it's a chunk, you know, but I'd like to save more than that, you know, we can kind of try to save more than that. And if you feel like it's not worth doing, there really isn't any, like, costs associated with doing this, other than just the time really it takes for me to look it over, to visit with the, the relationship banker at Wells Fargo, that's who we're looking at redoing this with. It's just a little bit of my time, which I, you know, I would be doing that sort of thing anyway, so I, I don't see where there'd be expenses associated with, with this.
So, we have, where did this $10,645,000 come from? Where's that number?
That number was about 15 when we, well, we renegotiated five years ago, all of the water bonds that we had, and we combined them, all except for one where we had really favorable terms, because they had done a refunding, that particular group had done a refunding, and so, we combined, I think, four loans and came up with this and got a better interest rate. So, we have already done this, only we did it combining several different loans.
So, this is what we still owe on the, on the current.
Water enterprise.
This is just the water debt that we owe, yeah. One of the things that we could put in there, if you want this to go beyond, you know, our current debt, is we could put a number in there, you know, you can refinance a certain amount, not to exceed, you know, 20 million, or something to make it more general, so we can always look at this. I think the number was put in there because that's actually what we owe now, and it makes sense that, you know, that's, that's what the outstanding debt is right now, and I guess we're trying, we, we came with a conservative approach to not give staff too much authority moving forward, but if council feels comfortable with giving us authority into the future with amounts beyond that, because we know we will be going into debt beyond that in the future, we definitely insert that number into the resolution. I think that was part of the discussion we wanted to have tonight, and the $250,000 is obviously the, the number that we spent more time focused at the last conversation when we brought this forward, and we didn't really put a limit on what the amount of debt is that we can refinance at any given time. So, we can, I guess we would want a little bit of direction on what you believe both of those numbers to be, is $250,000 savings over a 10-year period good enough for us to, to make that decision? And then, the second thing is, what's the amount of bonds that you would want to see us get $250,000 back?
So, would we only, I, you'd think I would know this answer by now, would we only be bonding in enterprise funds? Would there be any other situation where we would be bonding?
Quite honestly, this resolution is written for specific debt that we have, and it's all the water fund.
Okay.
And it is actually really the only debt that we have.
I guess, I don't know, I can't speak for anybody else, but I was thinking when we were talking about this the last time, that this would, it was more encompassing, so it was any kind of debt that we would have, that we would be able to move quickly on that, so I don't know if I'm maybe on.
And that was our intention initially, was that we would set a number in there of what the savings would be. What we didn't really discuss last time is what's that savings on? In this case, we put in the example, well, $250,000 on the current existing bond, but what we could do is put, we need to save at least $250,000 on, on a issuance of a bond of, you know, not more than $20 million. So, essentially, it would work out in the future. Right now, this is tailored just to this specific one.
And it could say, instead of the $10,645,000, it could say, because I do think it is important that we restrict me from increasing more debt, and so, you could just say, you know, the balance of the debt cannot be any higher than the existing debt, because this is specifically saying, don't go out and borrow an extra $2 million without us okaying it, you know, so, and any additional debt that we would go into would all be approved by the council anyway, you know? But, so you could change this and make it usable for other things, just by saying, you know, don't, don't have it exceed, but, I mean, I would be happy with this, because this is the only debt we have now, so I don't, this is what I'm worried about right now, you know?
That's why we have the date, that, because my, my question was why we were putting in a, the maturing date, but that's because it is a very specific date.
It's the same one, yeah, so.
It does make sense, I was just, I mean, if.
Yeah, it doesn't really say that we're talking about.
Bond.
That water bond, but, I mean, not bond, but debt.
That makes sense, thank you.
Well, I guess if that's just for this, maybe it should state that it is for redoing the, refinancing the bonding for the Water Enterprise Fund debt.
I think that's a good idea. In part one, actually, we would probably, or section one, maybe.
Yes.
With respect to the water bond.
Then we have city treasurer, different designations, and then they have you specifically paste in there, or placed in some of those. Should we just continue with city treasurer through there instead of a specific individual? And then, lastly, we have, it looks like it's only for a 12-month period from the date it's adopted, so. Is council fine with $25,000 a year over a 10-year period, a sufficient amount of savings to enter into this? And you already answered that there's no, is no real substantial cost to do this.
That's right.
Correct.
$250,000 seems like a, I mean, it seems a reasonable number. I know we started out the last time at a much higher number, and I thought we all thought that was a little high, I mean.
Yeah, but it wasn't still stipulated that it's a 10-year period, I mean, the timeframe or the amount, so, that's why I'm asking council to, initially, it was, what, $350,000, and they come up to be $35,000 a year savings on there to do it.
The first year is 50-something. The one that they were talking about, the first year was 50, and then it, you know, petered down to 20 or something, but over the whole time period, it was 335 or something.
Yeah.
And it's probably more right now, I mean, I don't know for sure, but I think it probably is. So, so you would have us change it to hereby authorize us.
Just the designation.
For Morgan City Treasurer to make the following determinations with respect to the water bond, and then the other place we would change it is in section three, we would delegate to the city treasurer the authority to determine the underwriter for the bonds, in case I were to pass away, within that 12 months we're talking about. Because we're only talking about 12 months, you know, Ron, I mean, I think I'm way alright.
No, you can hang longer than that.
No, I think that, I think that when I saw that, I thought that would be more appropriate as well. I think you should always refer to the position instead of the individual, you know, I think that makes sense. And I like the idea, so if you want to keep the 250 and go specific, we're talking about the water bonds, so the specifics in section two should remain the same as they are, is that what you're thinking? Guys, or ladies?
Yep, it's okay.
The other thing I thought that she brought up that was maybe a good idea is in section 2A, rather than having an amount like that saying, the amount of current debt shall not exceed the amount of the current debt. Just makes it more pliable down the line as far as still being applicable.
That's a really good point, because every time we make a payment, it goes down.
I say, which she brought up, and so, that's why I was thinking about it.
No, I think that might be good to put that, because the, the amount shall not exceed the, the amount of the current debt, because, like, you know, and we only pay this twice a year, but the principal does go down, so, you know, next time we pay. I changed it to what it was December 1st, because we just had a payment.
And what is the reason for just having it be in effect for a period of 12 months? So, we'll, I mean, so basically, we will do this, you guys will do this every year?
Actually, this, this gives us authority within the next 12 months to refinance it. What it does is it limits the authority of the treasurer to not have this in perpetuity, kind of as we discussed before, but it says in the next 12 months, if you can get at least $250,000 savings on our current outstanding debt, then you have authority to sign all the paperwork and get it started, and then get it over to, you know, lock it in, and then get the paperwork to the mayor to sign everything. So, it's, it's a limited authorization for the next 12 months. In the future, when we have other debts and we want to refinance them, we may come back with a similar kind of a resolution authorizing us to, you know, watch for those opportunities, and we'll keep looking for those opportunities and get that authorization. But as I said before, we went with a more conservative approach on this, so that, you know, there's limitations on what staff, staff's authorized to do into the future. So, yeah, in the next 12 months, if there's $250,000 in savings on this current outstanding debt, then Jeannie can pull the trigger on it and make it happen.
Yeah, and I think it wouldn't be uncommon to just, pardon me?
And that's basically because of the timeframe, by the time two weeks comes around for council to meet and authorize.
That's why, exactly, and it's.
But changes.
Not that different than, like, investments, I have the authority to do those anytime, you know, and that's actual cash money that I'm moving around if I want to, because I feel it's going to help the city. So, you know, this is just saying that, kind of a similar situation for debt.
So, then, we'll put city treasurer and the designations, and then designate it as water fund?
Yes.
Financing.
Is that what you guys?
Mm-hmm.
Everybody's fine with the $250,000? I would entertain a resolution unless anybody has any other questions.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution delegating authority to the city treasurer to initiate the refinancing of bonds or other city debt under certain parameters set forth by the city council with the previously discussed modifications.
Second.
Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, and a second by Allison Howe, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next is discussion and direction on scheduling a first reading on ordinance, creating a stormwater utility for the city of Fort Morgan and implementing a stormwater fee. Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, your honor. We kind of floated this out here at the last meeting, if it's something we need to continue to look at, and I'm sure we'll have some comments from council, and for sure, you know, comments from the public on their thoughts. I wanted to quickly just kind of go through the format that we have set up, and that we talked about almost a year and a half ago, or longer, when we started working on the specific aspects of this new utility. If you look at section 17-8-30, after you get through all the definitions, and you get through the general enabling language of the ordinance, we talk about a stormwater department that'd be created under the sewer department, and it'd be a sub-department within the sewer enterprise fund. And then there's the specific, under the next section, is the administration of how we administrate this department with the various funds and classifications of properties. What we did in the ordinance is we will have to go through, if this is passed, and do a specific designation on every property as to what classification they fall under. If you are determined to be a business classification, then you get a certain rate that you pay on a monthly basis with your sewer bill. If you don't believe that you are a business classification, maybe you are in the B1 zone, but you actually have a residential use, and you feel like, hey, wait a second, I live in my house in this zoning area, and I don't believe I should be paying this amount, then we have built in there an appeal for reclassification under 17-8-60, which gives the director of the department the authorization to review the classification and modify that classification if the homeowner or property owner doesn't believe that it was properly classified. And so we have, I guess, due process, as was discussed by council when it originally came out, to allow staff to review the original classification and ensure that we aren't classifying somebody's property appropriately for the fee that goes on to their property for the It's a very simple kind of characterization process to set the fees, and we did that intentionally, as we talked last time. You can get very complicated and decide, okay, what's pervious, what's impervious, and you can put together a very elaborate and concise classification process. And when we looked at that, the cost for just establishing the classification process, and then administering that classification process, would cost more than the proposed fees are in this current ordinance. So we went with a more simple process, we feel like it makes the most sense. Brush has a very simple process, theirs is different than ours. They go by linear foot in front of the residence, and you pay by the linear foot. We wanted to have something a little more specific to address the pervious versus impervious based upon zoning classifications, and that's what we came up with, that's what we presented to council almost two years ago, and it's what we still recommend today. I know that there will probably be a lot of questions about how this will roll out. I know that, and I want to thank staff who've spent a lot of time on saying, okay, how do we make this work under our current situation? You know, right now, streets departments do a lot of the work in the system, and cleaning, modifying, doing the different projects. And we will continue to use that staff and those resources, so that we're not adding new employees, new trucks, new everything else. We'll continue to operate it as efficiently as we can, and with the idea that we will start to build a capital fund reserve that we can use to leverage grants from DOLA for some of the bigger projects that we know are coming up, such as the Ensign area, which is a problem area, 8th and Ensign, what do we do over there, and some of the other bigger projects that we have in mind. One of the big drivers for this fee and department was the fact that Department of Local Affairs, in our last grant process, where they provided a grant for stormwater, which fixed the South, or a lot of the South Sherman issues, said that if the city doesn't have a fee, and is not willing to invest in fixing its own problems, then they probably would not invest by giving us any more grants. And so it's incumbent upon us, as I guess a community, to demonstrate to the state that we're willing to at least put some skin in the game to fix the problem, and it will help us leverage additional grants to address some of the bigger projects that we have going on. So what we would like to do, or suggest tonight, is have council have a discussion on any feedback that you've received, answer any questions that you might have, maybe there's some historical questions of why are we doing this, how long have we been doing this? I know that the mayor is well-versed in the history on this, because he lived a lot of it when he was working for the city. And, you know, address any concerns that the citizens have as it relates to this, and then our recommendation would be, if you still feel comfortable with it, that we put it on for a first reading of the ordinance, and then, once we have that scheduled, we'll come back at the first reading and let you know some of the administrative tasks that we have to put into place in order to fully administer what is adopted and passed. So I guess we would turn it back over to the council to, for any questions, or any discussion, or thoughts that you might have.
So currently, the street department does all the storm catch basin maintenance, and that with the street sweepers, and that. We have money allocated from the general fund doing that portion. Are these funds, or what will be generated here, going to be partial to fund O&M and do what's necessary, or is there going to be, are we going to carry the $300,000, or whatever the amount is from the street department, over to this department as well? Or are we going to be pulling from reserves out of the wastewater to operate this?
That's a very good question. The initial plan is that we will continue to have the streets department manage the catch basins, the street sweeping, everything that they're currently doing. There would be a transfer out of the general fund, not to exceed the Tabor limits, into the sewer fund, which then would be transferred back to cover the costs associated with the streets department performing those services. So the idea is that we continue to do what we're doing without costing any additional funding to the ratepayers. We will not be taking money out of the reserves in the sewer fund. The idea would be to create a separate reserve fund for stormwater that would build up, and we could track, okay, here's what we've collected in stormwater and put into capital reserves, so we can leverage additional funding down the road for grants and other projects. And then the other thing that we can look at from those fees is a potential income stream, in the event that we had to bond for any specific project as part of the process. The idea is, and we've done really good, is my concept of pay-as-you-go, as you save up the money, and then you get the project lined up, get as many grants as you can, and then pay for the project. You know, the other option that we have is to bond at the front end and use that revenue stream to pay down the bonds. So we're going to try and go with what traditionally council has, I guess, felt comfortable with, is put money in capital, build up, and try and save as much money as we can to offset or match grants, and then down the road, if we have to bond for bigger items, we can. You know, one of the things that we didn't discuss last time, and, did that answer your question?
Yes.
Mayor, okay. Before I editorialize a little bit, make sure I answered your question, is the, there are certain EPA regulations that are being pushed down from larger communities, then to smaller communities, about pre-treatment requirements for stormwater. And when you get that imposition, you don't have a choice. You have to comply with the regulations, or they come in and assess big fines and create a lot of problems. So that, again, this is a fee that we can start doing some of that preemptive work before we're under those regulations, which we know will eventually make them, make it to Fort Morgan.
Any other questions, or comments? When are you looking at wanting to do the first reading? First part of January, or?
I think that would be, you know, up to what council feels like. Do you want to wait till we have the new council seated and moving forward? Would you like to do it before then? We would leave it up to you to make that decision. I think, you know, staff is okay, I mean, we've been working on it for so long, if it is put off for a few more months, that's okay with us, too. If we had a date, we knew it was going to be presented, then we could work on what we believe the administrative steps would be before we actually start charging the fee, because we know we've got to set up all the, we have to classify all the different properties, give notice to the owners, this is how we're classifying your property, and then get it all put into the billing system, and make sure that it goes out correctly.
So we're probably looking close to February, it would probably be the appropriate timeframe by the time we get all the notifications and-
Well, and our recommendation would be that you set it for a first reading, we'll come in and tell you, look, when you pass this, we don't want it to have, if it passes on second reading, we would want an implementation date, instead of the standard 14 days, five days after publication, and 14 days for first, from first publication, to say that after publication, it doesn't go into effect for six months. That the actual effective day of the ordinance would be three months from now, or six months from now, so that you could have it in place, but then we have a timeline, and the citizens have a timeline, for us to work through all of those issues. So if you want to do it in February, that's fine, too, we'll come and say-
Well, I'm just saying, because January's meetings are going to be pretty well inundated with-
Yeah, with-
Needs and necessities.
With our process.
Yeah.
That would be fine, if council wants us to put it on the February agenda, we can do that.
It's not a February.
We don't have a February calendar.
It'd either be the first or the third.
We're fighting to keep this year as long as we can, but it just is running away from us.
Yes, it is.
So it'd be February 4th or 18th.
Sure.
All right, so-
Throw it on.
February it is.
Fourth.
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 Fourth?
Yep. And then if we need to adjust that, we can, but I think this puts a, gets us a timeframe to start getting that information together on what it's going to take to put it into place.
Okay.
Perfect.
All righty.
So, thank you.
And, next is presentation on the first reading of an ordinance to allow large group home in a B2 zoning district by special use permit, and request to schedule a public hearing for December 17th. Mr. Glamire, Mr. Wells.
All right. Good evening. Happy Christmas tie month.
Woo-hoo.
Number two in the collection.
I like it.
This is one of yours. What you have in your packet tonight, council? We talked about this at the last meeting, this is an ordinance that would allow by special use permit, large group homes in the B2 zoning district. Like we discussed, large group homes are only allowed in two zoning districts, the R3 and the B1 currently. It's tough to find locations for large group homes, particularly in the B1, but there are some locations in the B2 that seem to lend themselves for possible use for that. So we've had some requests to consider that, I think that's a good move. It does open up a little bit more of the Fort Morgan for development of these types of facilities. Again, definition of large group home, that's eight or more persons living at a location that are receiving some type of care, training, or treatment. And then there may be any number of staff in addition to those that are at that facility, whether living there or not, so. I know we talked about this at the last meeting, kind of got it out there in the public, I've not received any comments on the issue at all, I'm not sure if you all did or not, but I think this is a good move, if we would move this ordinance forward, so be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I had a couple people ask about clarification, but that's about the extent of that one. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
No, good idea.
I would entertain a resolution, then.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution on first reading of an ordinance to allow large group homes in the B2 zoning district by special use permit, and request to schedule a public hearing on the ordinance for December the 17th.
Second. All right, resolution by Lisa Northrup, and a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All right, thank you all very much.
See you next time. New tie. Next on the agenda is public comment or audience participations for items that were not on our agenda. Going once, twice? Reports by officials and staff.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to report to council that we have turned in our DOLA grant applications for the Fieldhouse project, as well as some other public improvements that we're looking at for other projects within the community, and excited to see how those turn out, and want to thank all the staff that assisted in helping put those together. Also want to thank all of our first responders over the last week or so, with all the different storm events that have come through, wreaked havoc on traffic and streets, and, you know, I think sometimes we forget that some of our first responders are also in the Public Works Department, in the Utilities Department, as they're the first ones that have to go out and clear the snow, and they perform a lot of other important first responder duties. But I think, as a team, they've worked really hard to keep up with some pretty ugly weather situations, and really want to recognize them, and thank all of them for the hard work that they do to keep the community safe. You know, it's, the holiday time is upon us, and we'll be having our city holiday party this Saturday. Yep, and really excited about that, and we also, we'll be doing our employee recognition, holiday recognition again this year, by providing certificates to Edwards for Hammer a Turkey. That's been a very popular thing with the employees, and they really appreciate the fact that we recognize them, and give them, give them something that they can enjoy with their family during the holidays. I want to thank council for your support in doing that as well. So, things are going pretty well. I don't know, did anybody else have any announcements or anything? Was there anything that council needed to bring to our attention, or anything that we need to address? I know Doug talked to me a little bit before, we had something go out in the bills, a notice about shoveling walks and putting it out into the street, and there'll be a $70, could be a $70 fine. To be honest, I didn't know about that, and why that went into the bills, but we'll definitely track down and understand why that is. But there is a rule and requirement that you not put snow into the city right-of-way, and I think, for the most part, we don't have problems with that, as far as I know. But, you know, I think if you push all the snow out of your parking lot into the city right-of-way, and cars aren't able to pass, that would probably cause a problem, but otherwise, I don't anticipate that there would be much of an enforcement if you took a couple shuffleful and pushed it off your walk into the street. And I know Paul's not here tonight, and I was going to kind of get his perspective on how they would be enforcing that, because I think there were some concerns by citizens about, you know, we'd be out watching everybody shovel their walk, and make sure that nothing got into the street, and that's not the case. I think the real concern is if you take a front-end loader and dump a big pile in the middle of the street. And so, we'll follow up on that, and make sure we understand where that came from, and make sure we get the right information out to the citizens, but thank you for bringing that to my attention.
I had one person that commented on it. What if they're, this had drifted up in front of theirs, it's already in the street, they use their snow blower to blow it away from the curb, so that their wife does not pound into the curb with the front end of the car? They're not putting it in the street, they're just relocating it, it's already in the street.
Relocation in the street. It's a good question. You know, I think sometimes in these storms- You know, I think sometimes in these storms, you just have to do what you have to do, and, and hopefully, and, and I believe that our employees in the police department and those that enforce this would have, you know, the common sense to say, hey, people are just doing what they need to do to, to get their cars out, to get, to keep their, to get out of their front door and to keep things safe, and so, you know, I, I think sometimes when we send out these notices, it might not be received with, with the intent that it's sent, and I think the intent wasn't to say, we're going to be watching everything that everybody does. But that is a good question, and I'd say, you know, in big storms like this...
My neighbors asked me about it.
I, I think you got to do what you got to do to get your car out and get to work, and, and I think it's understandable, and I, and I hope that our employees would see that, hey, people are just doing what it takes to get to work, or to make their wife happy, which is also very important.
I think it was self-serving to make him happy, so he doesn't have to align the front end again.
Yeah, well...
There's history there, apparently.
Just saying. You brought up the Field House. Did we ever get the, what, that was going to be the turnkey cost of, of that, or are you still working on that?
We're, we're still working on that. I know the Recreation Department is still looking at the, it's called FFNE, which is abbreviation for what I like to call furniture, so it's fixtures, furniture, and equipment, and so we're still looking at what will we transfer over there, how will we, you know, what, what do we need to still fill that in, so we don't have those numbers yet. We're still getting some final numbers back from the, from the engineers and the design team to make, well, and then also the independent evaluator or cost estimator, who's looking at this, so we can dial in these numbers a little bit closer. So the answer is no, we don't have those finals numbers, we're still working on them, and we'll be having another meeting, I think, with them on Thursday, so, still working on it.
Thanks.
I want to make sure we remind everybody that Thursday, Thursday's the parade.
Thursday's the parade.
And we're getting ready for Christmas Capitol the Plains, all the activities, make sure.
We are the Christmas Capitol the Plains. And we're going to have like a, the ice skating rink that we announced last time, and it's been a first for that. Yeah, it's going to be great.
I'm caught up on my insurance, right? Okay, bids, meetings, and announcements. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, your honor. The city has three bids out right now, accepting sealed bids for three police patrol vehicles until 3:00 PM on December 5th. Bids for a four-wheel-drive, half-ton pickup until 3:00 PM on December 5th.
Ah, yeah.
And sealed bids for one unmarked police vehicle until 3:00 PM on December 12th. Under meetings, the Airport Advisory Board will meet the 11th, December 11th, at noon at the airport. The Library Advisory Board is scheduled to meet December 16th at 4:30 PM in the Museum Community Room. And the next city council regular meeting will be at 6:00 PM on December 17th here at City Hall. That will be the last council meeting of this year, there will be two weeks till the next one on January 7th, and of course, will be closed on Christmas Day and New Year's Day. And, yeah, the parade is at, I believe, 6 o'clock on Thursday, and I think the mayor's got a date with a big fake electric switch to...
It's powered. It's powered.
It's real.
It's magic.
Okay.
Yes, I will throw that switch.
Magic switch. The whole city will be illuminated, right?
Well, at least the tree.
Or it'll all go, "Dzzzz."
Then we got to talk to Mr. Lent and them boys.
They'll have it ready. They always have it ready.
If it takes the whole grid down.
Oh.
And he flips the switch.
Okay. So with that, our next item on the agenda is an executive session. For the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 24-6-4024E, and the following additional details are provided for the identification purposes. Economic incentives. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second. Is that you, Kevin?
Yes.
I have a motion by Lisa Northrup, a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We will adjourn to executive session.